Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, July 6, 2010, an extremely hot day in Athens. We do have a quorum with six of seven members present. Member Paul is absent. Communications, member Nysley.
Yes, I wanted to let the city know that we received a comment from the organizers of the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure. That our city employees have been particularly helpful during the ride, especially Rich Campitelli, Ron Lucas, Collier and Mosley, and part of, a vital part of what made it a success. So they can be their thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other communications? Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly wanted to mention that I was receipt of an email concerning, I think, a small water leak on North Lancaster, and I did forward that on to our Public Works Director, Mr. Stone. I think it's near the sidewalk on the left-hand side of the hill going up the street.
They're aware of it. They've been aware of it since the last staff meeting. I think they have trouble finding it. When I say "find it," it's somewhere up the pipe, and they can start digging.
Okay.
And work their way up the pipe up there, and wait for it to work itself out a little bit more.
It's always frustrating when we know about this leak, so for one reason or another they can't be dealt with for a period of time, and you're watching treated water roll on. Are there, yes, member, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to make the public aware of a home energy assistance program with the heavy summer heat they were experiencing. This is administered by Hocking Athens Community Action, a program from July 1st through August 31st, and it's primarily for older, those of 60 and older that may have health issues if they're in high heat situations or other health issues. For more information, and it is income-based, you can get information from Hocking Athens Community Action at 1-800-686-1093.
Thank you. Member Sands.
I was just going to ask, member Gosney, do you know what they're offering, or just ...
Yeah, this is up to $175 off of summer electric bills for cooling purposes, for income-qualified purposes.
Thank you.
Very good. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile.
Nothing really. Again, we're aware of the leak. They just haven't been able to pinpoint a particular piece of the pipe, so rather than dig up the whole road, they're going to work around to see if they can get a better location on it. Member Gosney, if you get a chance, maybe forward that to the city website, and they can, they can put it up there.
I can do that.
Okay. I don't really have anything else, really.
City Auditor Kathy Heck.
No report.
Law Director Patrick Lang.
No report.
Let's move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 6510 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2011 State Capitol Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program for Issue One funds and to execute contracts as required. Remember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of O6510.
Second.
And as the title explains, it is to authorize the mayor to enable us to submit applications for the Issue One funds for the city.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6610 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens, Inc., of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-laws 15 and 17 in the city of Athens, and declaring an emergency. Again, member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of O6610.
Second.
And this is a lease that's with the First Presbyterian Church that has gone on for a number of years, and this is a renewal of the lease for rental of parking spaces.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 6610 is adopted. Ordinance 6910 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens, Ohio, to execute an agreement with Hallmark Athens Student Housing, LLC, to summit at Toots Run for a water main easement. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 6910.
Second.
6910 gives us an easement for water lines, and this is probably more than anything else, an outgrowth of the peculiar way this particular, whatever it is, single building was permitted.
Further discussion or editorial comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 6910 is adopted. Ordinance 7110 is an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to make application and execute a business card agreement with Chase Bank. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 7110.
Second.
This is an ordinance that we've talked about. The auditor would like to be able to use this P-card as it would be compared to for certain large purposes, for which she will be able to get several percentage points and discounts for making large purchases, such as paying our workers' compensation early, or purchasing large items like a vehicle or something.
Further discussion?
Do you have anything else? I think you did a good job, unless anybody has any questions.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7310 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement. I'm sorry. I stand corrected. I jumped across an ordinance. Now we move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 7210 is an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Member Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider ordinance 7210 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for this suspension is that a portion of this ordinance deals with paving the Presbyterian lot, the Upper College Street lot, and so to take advantage of the summer paving time. We need to get going on that.
I did notice equipment setting on such lots on my way here today. Is there a further discussion on suspension of the rules only? Mayor Wile.
They're paving the lower part, and they'll get to the top part, so we need to suspend soon, so we can actually pay.
That's what we're working on.
I know.
All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules have been suspended. Member Kuhn.
I move to adopt ordinance 7210.
Second.
This is an ordinance that amends the 2010 appropriation ordinance by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the following sums, and we talked about these items last week during committee meetings. First of all is $18,000 to Recreation Fund 270, Transaction Class 500. That breaks down as $2,000 for Drinking Fountain at Sells Park, and $16,000 for a water slide at the city pool. We've lost, oh, I have a, I have, I have a wrong, there's an updated one.
The clerk has pointed out to me, but I'm sure you are seeing there, that...
There's an updated, there's an updated amount.
Yes, there is. Can we recognize that as a typo, or should we? Because I understand in parentheses, the $22,000 is the correct amount. We will have the minutes of the meeting reflect that, and that the $18,000...
$20,000, up to $20,000 for the water slide.
...will be changed to $22,000 to reflect what was in, up as in parentheses.
Okay.
I asked the law director, and he is allowing us to recognize that as a typo.
Okay, great. So then it's still $2,000 for the Drinking Fountain at Sells Park, and $20,000 for the water slide at the city pool. Thank you for catching that. And we have lost a diving board at the pool, and due to new safety requirements, it can't be replaced with another diving board. And so we will be adding a water slide to the pool as an improvement to the city pool. And, member Butler, did you have something to say about that?
Thank you, member Kuhn. I was just going to add briefly that after, I was informed that after second glance, the slide was not, more money needed to be appropriated for that, which is the difference in the price there additionally. And then also that unfortunately, the slide will not be put in this summer, but it'll be put in during the off-season, and will be accessible then next summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as we mentioned before, $5,000 to General Fund Other Administrative 101.120, Transaction Class 300, for paving the Presbyterian lot, the Upper College Street lot. Also, on the revised copy that I have now, I noticed that it says $138,000, $138,059 to Law Enforcement Fund 293, Transaction Class 300, for the Secure Our Schools Grant passed through to the Athens City Schools, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts.
That last one requires new city match, does it?
Right. We, I apologize, but we just added that today from our office when we realized there was that. I think there's been discussion about the grant. It was a grant through the police department for the Secure Our Schools, you know, happened a long time ago. Well, now, the schools, it's basically the schools are doing the majority of the improvements, and then it's a reimbursement grant. And so now that they're spending the money, we have to make sure that it's in there and appropriated in this fund.
Okay.
But it is full reimbursement.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Further discussion on ordinance 72? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 7210 has been passed under suspension of the rules. Ordinance 7310 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, and the National Endowment for the Arts, the NEA, for the Appalachian Gateway Communities Initiative, Natural and Cultural Heritage Tourism Development Gateway Initiative Grant, and declaring an emergency. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I need to request a suspension of the rules, considering there's a due date of July 22nd on this.
Second.
Second. Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 73?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt this ordinance 7310, but I can go into a brief description about the grant as well on this ordinance. This is a unique opportunity which we discussed...
Do we have a second?
Sorry. Thank you. This is a unique opportunity which we discussed during committee meeting last week, and it will authorize the mayor to submit this application and enter into agreement with the Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, and the National Endowment for the Arts. Essentially, this, if we're lucky enough to be recipients of this grant, which, because only three are offered in the country during a year, and this would empower the city to work on arts and natural resources as potential economic push and aid. Consultants would come in from the ARC and NEA and work with the Athens Municipal Arts Commission specifically. So I'm excited about this opportunity, and it is a $2,500 amount that we're offering, and I believe I'd heard correctly that the county commissioners also supported their end of the request.
Their amount, $2,200, $2,500 as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7310?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 7410 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens, Ohio, to execute an easement agreement with the state of Ohio for the bike pathway along Home Street, and declaring an emergency. In the absence of member Paul, who will be speaking with us. Is no one available or familiar with this ordinance?
Yes, I'm not.
Member Nysley? This looks like your kind of issue. Why don't we take a look at the ordinance together?
We will.
Okay.
I guess...
Read the where is. It sounds like a good thing.
I don't see a lot of cost.
Where is? Read the where is.
Okay. Where is? The city of Athens desires to obtain from the state of Ohio an easement to permit the installation, construction, reconstruction, use, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, removal, servicing, and improvement of an asphalt bike path. Therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, the mayor of the city of Athens is hereby authorized to execute an easement, a copy of which is attached here too, and incorporated here with by reference granting an easement from the state of Ohio to the city of Athens for a bike pathway near the Nelsonville Public Library, Nelsonville Public Library.
Countywide system.
Okay, that's right. Along Home Street on state-owned land for a period of 25 years, commencing August 1st, 2010, and ending July 31st, 2035, for a total consideration of $1. Do we have that money in the budget?
Yeah.
Over a period of time, I have noticed that that is a place that could very well use an access to the bike path. Kathy, can you...
I thought this was a repair for that drainage failure there where the bike path has sunked back in there. Have any bikes been on there?
No, I think it's the state line between...
Just so we have control of it?
Actually, I think it's going to go behind when I heard it. This is north.
Okay. Well, it has been read. I'm not hearing any need for suspension, and maybe next time, member Paul will be here to speak to any ordinance. Yes, Mayor.
During committee, last committee, there was, I did get a copy of this agreement. I think Director Lang has the originals or some of them. If I'm reading the, looking at the Exhibit A, this is going to be an easement, if I understand it correctly, that will go behind the library but along the old rail tracks, which is owned by the university. And I think it's going to give us a ability to cut across, if I'm reading this correctly. I may be wrong on that.
It's another easement for bicyclists.
Yeah.
Around the lot.
Now, wait a second. It says beginning point is, end point. Actually, it is where the other bike, the bike path is we have right now, from Home Street straight down.
Tell Chris we really miss her.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So it's probably just because we never had one there, and we put one in.
We have two.
And I will punish any other council member that introduces an ordinance and does not have somebody to cover it when they're not here to speak. Okay, we have read it. We're up to 75, right? Ordinance 7510 is an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Nysley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you can see from the ordinance 7510, the description of it, this is for the release of two police vehicles, a 2001 Chevy Impala and a 2006 Chevy Impala as well. And we have a clause in there that the, the city is also authorized to dispose of it by donation to other governmental agencies or nonprofits if we would find such.
Other comments? Ordinance 7610 is an ordinance amending ordinance O310, authorizing construction, engineering, and construction of the Richland Avenue Improvements, Project Number 230, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we consider, I'm requesting that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
And this is for the purpose of being able to pave, and that paving would be taking place within the next week or two. And so that's the reason we will put this suspension.
Further discussion? All in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of O7610.
Second.
Okay, and this, this particular improvement to Richland Avenue is being, I think, coordinated with the roundabout, and what it would do is be for the paving of a section of Richland Avenue from Schaefer to the Oxbo Bridge. Money has already been appropriated, so this is authorizing use of monies up to $100,000 for that paving. But we will likely not need that much money, but that's how much we would be authorized.
Okay. Other comments?
I just wanted to make it clear that this is an addition. It's not truly part of this project. They just want to do it at the same time, and that this, there's no reimbursement from ODOT for any of this money. This $100,000 will come out of our street rehab fund.
I'm sorry. Member Sands.
This is going from Schaefer Street...
Up to Oxbo Bridge.
Are we going to maintain the crosswalk? Is that...
I assume so, yes.
I would think so. I haven't heard anything otherwise.
So we'll just replace it with other stuff? Okay. It is kind of ratty through there, yeah.
Yeah, it is, but how did we miss this? Or what, what happened? Why...
Tenno trees, I tune in. I think it's just an additional, probably, if I was going to guess at this, I'd have to say that we probably got a good deal because all the equipment's there, and then everybody's scratching their heads and saying, why don't we go, why don't we do it while it's there? As well as you, when we tried taking out those, the old lines, the old yellow lines, we really scored it up quite a bit there, and it's been deteriorating faster. I guess you lose some kind of coating there. I was aware of that, that it has been deteriorating faster than we'd like.
Speed bumps.
And this is coming out of the street fund?
Street rehab.
Street rehab, the 572.
Okay, which has already been incurred. Thank you. Okay, yeah, Kathy.
I was just going to say, my understanding from the deputy auditor, Ray Hazel, who used to be Service Safety Director, is that in the past, that with ODOT, if you had a project and you don't know how it is, you paint one room, that makes the rest of the other rooms look shabby, and you could add on, but they've kind of cracked down on that, and so they don't really allow us to add on these extra little things as we go along. And so they got in there and started this and realized that, you know, that now that next block looks pretty bad, and so it just has to come out of our own money.
Okay. Other comments? All in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 7710 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions. Member Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance that we discussed a few weeks ago in committee. It's, thinking about it in context of Independence Day weekend here, really got me thinking about common American values of fairness, opportunity, and community. And what this ordinance does is strengthens our city's non-discrimination policy to make sure that we can protect the rights of our friends, our neighbors, and visitors to the city. If you look at the attached proposed changes, what it does is adds to a list of other, other items, gender identity or expression. And this is a group of residents that has not had the protection of our non-discrimination policy to this point, and so this is what we're bringing forward. And I worked with members of the community on this to, they approached me and asked that this is something that we take up, and I know there are some supporters here, and I would ask that if any of them feel inclined to speak, that you would open the floor to them.
Of course. First, any other members of council wishing to speak? Yes, member Sands.
I would just point out that notice everywhere that gender identity or expression is bold, printed boldly, right ahead of that is sexual orientation, which the council has added as a protected category some time before this. Now we're strengthening the, we're hoping to strengthen the ordinance.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak?
I think we're good up here, buddy.
We seem to be pretty good up here. Thank you very much. On to resolutions for first reading. Resolution O810 is a resolution consenting to the city's participation in the Athens County Multijurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Member Gosney, please explain that to us.
I will do my best. So we had a visitor here at my last committee meeting, Lori Burchett, from the Athens County Regional Planning Commission, and they are working on a, as you said, a multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan. In the past, the city has had its own plan, and other jurisdictions have had their own plan. This will be one plan for all the, all the cities and municipalities to work off of in our, in Athens County. And they need permission in the form of a resolution. The city needs to, needs to consent to being a part of that plan. Part of this is going to be public hearings, or public meetings at least, and as I mentioned, we discussed it on June 14th. We will have to have another one before the end of the year, once the plan has actually been drafted.
Okay. Other comments? This is a three-reading resolution. Member Wile.
In terms of the, what's going on here, this is actually being worked out with the city, Amesville, other cities, or rather villages, and the county planner, Bob Eichenberg, and he's pretty much the point person, as well as Lori is Burchett there. So if you have input or you have questions, that's the person to contact or us. That makes it easier.
Yes, member Gosney.
And I did neglect to mention, you know, the whole point of this is to reduce loss of life or property in the event of some sort of serious natural disaster or other type of harmful, dangerous event.
Member Sands.
Part of this process is collecting some information through a questionnaire, and I think we, we made mention of the fact that we would hopefully put that on our city website. Do you think it's up there yet?
I do not know, but I'll try finding out.
Okay. Here's my questionnaire, by the way.
Other comments on the resolution? Okay. On to item seven on our agenda, which is announcements and other business. Member Nysley, I believe there was something you wished to speak to?
Yes, just an announcement. A few months ago, I think I've shared with you an idea, a project going on in Burlington, Vermont, called the Front Porch Forum, and I found out about it thanks to a civic-minded county resident who works in the city and thought it might be a good match for Athens. And we've had a few conversations with the founder of the Front Porch Forum, and it's really grown in the state of Vermont. It has 140 registered neighborhoods across the state there, and 19,000 households in Burlington who are members of this. And it's basically kind of a virtual community where people communicate closely together via emails, and it's led to a lot of other good community relations. And they've recently received a Knight Foundation Award for $220,000 to upgrade the software programming that makes this possible. And they are interested in coming to Athens in September to see if this might be a pilot community that they might consider expanding the program to outside of Vermont. So September 13th, I have the date confirmed, they are, the founder of that program is coming to visit, and that'll be a night of a committee meeting, and so I'm making advance request for a community issues committee meeting. I just think it has some really exciting possibilities. So we'll be interested in during that day, he will be here for a day, and we very much like for student groups, undergraduate and graduate groups, the university, the community here at city council, other places, might be Hillel Foundation, other church groups. I know the senior, the Athens Village, has expressed interest in meeting with a person too, so we're going to see how many meetings we can fit into one day and conversations to go on about that.
It's really exciting. I think that could be something that would work well in this community. I love the idea of that.
Could be, yeah. And one other item of interest that's come up, and it's also kind of a community issue, and this came out of a conversation at Project Clean meeting that Michelle Draboll shares. And at that meeting, we were talking about service learning and university students, and Ann Lombard directed us to, suggested we continue conversations with the university. And we've had several conversations with, or a conversation with Kent Smith, and then David Discutner, and then a later discussion with two people at the university, Elisa Comedy and Kevin Smith, who shared with us astounding stories of a lot of community service work that's going on that we're not aware of. And so I wanted to kind of get the sense of council members here, if that might not be something that would be beneficial for them to give a short presentation on the kinds of service learning that's going to be... I wanted to kind of get the sense of council members here, if that might not be something that would be beneficial for them to give a short presentation on the kinds of service learning that's going on.
I thought it'd be a nice thing that we could do under our civic committee, basically them meeting at the hall. Why don't we try to get that scheduled? What would you think?
We could try for before September 13, and I don't know if it might be too much on the same day as September 13. That's when...
Maybe the first meeting in September.
Okay, okay.
Could work towards that.
Oh, you is back by then, aren't you?
Mm-hmm. They are. And I think that would be helpful, too, so the story's kind of out there for the, you know, for the students, too.
Right. Okay, thank you. Member Gosny?
Yes, in anticipation of possibly city council going on recess in August, I would like to request a special session next Monday in order to have three readings for any unfinished business that was introduced this evening.
And council rules provide for special sessions to be requested by three members of council. Do we have two other members, Member Bain and Member Sands? Okay. Other announcements or other business? Yes, Member Butler.
Thank you, sir. I just would like to request a committee meeting next Monday for planning and development, specifically to talk about a few interesting issues, sustainability, food security slash hens or urban chickens. Thank you.
Urban chickens.
Clarify some stuff in the code.
Okay. Any other announcements? On to an opportunity for any citizen wishing to speak. I'm sorry?
I just wanted to request, we're requesting meetings, transportation.
Okay. Do we have any citizen that would like to speak before council on any issue that we did not cover tonight? Seeing none and having addressed all other items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.